Councilmember Mayo will not be here this evening. There are no additional agenda items and I'm not going to give a scheduling update this week because the city manager tells me that we need to talk tomorrow and some things may shift around, so anything I say this evening, I may make a liar out of myself tomorrow, so not going to go there. So we'll move along to public comment. And we'll go to Mr. Lovelace first.
My name-- oh, it's not working, is it?
I think it is.
It is?
Yep.
There it goes. Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, your official peace delegate. Well, I tell you that yesterday we had a wonderful demonstration down at the Ninth and Mash Avenue, was for protesting the aid pack, aid to Israel, for the military. I want people to know that we are not anti-Semitic. A lot of people think that if we're protesting the aid to Israel, we're anti-Semitic, but we're not. I have a lot of Jewish friends and I care a lot about the Jewish people. It's got nothing to do with religion, it has got to do with warfare. We're giving out a lot of money, billions of dollars, to Israel in aid, you know, for their military. And I mean billions of dollars, we are giving away. Not just saying, "Here, give it back tomorrow." We are giving it away. And we can't keep afford to do that, because number one, there's a risk that they're going to go after Iran and we're going to have to pile in with them. And that's going to mean another war, whether we like it or not. We've got to stand up against this war. We've got to bring our people from Tacoma Park down to the demonstration. They've got to get down there and protest the war. If I can get down there sometimes, they should be able to. We have a metro system here that can get you down there. They have cars, if they have them, they can use them and maybe carpool and bring other people down. You know, help get our senior citizens down to protest this war. Because we are about to go after Iran, and I am not in favor of that. And I don't think anybody who wants peace is in favor of riling up the Middle East any further than we have already done it. And we've got to try to repair the damage we have already done. You know, and we've got to stand up, we've got to have a little backbone. At least I may have broken my back about nine times, but at least I got a backbone to break. And I think we've got to stand up for what we really believe in. You know, and I don't see any reason why we can't. Tacoma Park has been a peace community for many years now, and I think we can continue to do so. We should continue to do so. We have led the country in many ways, both as far as the peace movement and the environmental movement. There's no reason why we cannot continue doing that. We've got to think of creative ways to resist this war, to say, "No, we are not participating in it any further." We've got to think of ways of doing that, as a city, as a people, as a nation. We've got to stand up and do what we can. There's several opportunities where we can do that. We've got demonstrations we could do, we've got petitions going around to protest the war, and we can do it. We can go for that, fund our communities, and ask for our money back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the public comment.
Hi, this is Robyn Lee, I live in Ward 4, 777 Essex House. I'm here to publicly put my comments about the Junction's report. First and foremost, I'd like to-- this is a very impressive piece of work. I'm really excited about the fact that they've taken so much time and energy to produce such an amazing report. And my thanks goes to each and every member of the task force for putting so much into it. But after saying that, I really have to express the fact that this hard-worked piece of work does not represent my voice. For the last 10 years, I've worked hard, thinking of an international coffee roasting, importing, and distributing company. Someday it would be the likes of Starbucks, for lack of a better example. And I've worked hard to establish the first model here in Tacoma Park. And I've made my intentions clear in so many public events. I've-- so much media coverage about my inauguration of the Blasted Coffee. Despite the fact that the task force has discussed Blasted Coffee at several of its meetings, one of the copy of the minutes I had reflected, the fact that nobody called me, interviewed me to see what my aspiration was, what my thinking was, was a bit disappointing. On page 26, it only mentions a few words. It reflects the minimum aspiration that I have for the temporary concept paper that I submitted. So I am impressed, I'm going to work with the rest of the interested group to make sure that I'm in the mix to produce the best value for the land, for our community. So that is the first thing I'd like to say. The second thing is, somewhere in this book, there's one sentence that speaks so much about the very sad reality of our city. The task force did an outreach and asked a few people at the Franklin's, and none of them knew the Junction. They were at the Junction, leave alone the work of the task force, leave alone the vision that we have for that place. And I took it upon myself to ask about 20, 30 people who live in Maple Avenue. None of them know the word Junction, none of them are aware of the fact that there is such a discussion, a conversation, that I don't want to blame the task force, but that's a sad commentary about our city. I don't know whose fault that is, and I just want to make a note of that. And after that, I'd like to give a credit to our city paper. The city paper one article covered so much about what I'm trying to do than this hard worked book. So I'm sorry that none of them are here, I am going to be here for the reports, but I just want to put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Edmonds, and I live in Tacoma Park on Maple Avenue. I've been living in Tacoma Park since 1968. I used to own a house in Tacoma Park on Allagane Avenue. I owned the house for 23 years, but now I live on Maple Avenue. And where I'm living, I've been living there now for 19 years. And I've never had a problem since I lived there. But now, just started a little two months ago, the apartment is right joining mine, the people have started smoking in there. So I'm wondering if there's a law in Maryland, or if there's something that can be done where people smoking in a public place will disturb other people? Because it is really bothering me at night, sometimes I can't sleep at night, and I'll be choking up, and somehow I have to open my window, as cold as it is. And every few minutes, days, and I talked to the resident manager there, and she did speak to the people, and it stopped about four or five days, and then it started back again. And I can hardly sleep, and when I go out, even when I'm in church, I sit there every now and then, I look around, I see who's smoking in here, you know? It's all in my-- it's stuck in my nose, where I can smell it all the time now, it just stays with me everywhere I go, even outside. So I'm wondering if there's something that can be done. Now, I'm not talking about people private homes, they can do what they want in their private home, but in a public place like this, where it affects other people, I think something ought to be done. It comes-- I don't know what it's coming through, the drywall, or coming through the electrical plugs, or what, but it's coming in my apartment, as they're sitting right in there with me. Now, I used to smoke back in-- I quit back in the 60s because it was affecting my health. The doctor didn't have to tell me to quit, I knew it was affecting my health, and I quit. Now I cannot bear somebody else's smoking, you know, and I'm in my own apartment, and it's coming through the wall and affecting me. So I'm wondering if there's something that can be done about that. Like I said, you know, in a private home, you know, people do what they want, I think, but in a public building like this, I think something should be done. Because there are some public parks where smoking is banned. Now, inside of my apartment, I mean, they're sitting right in there with me smoking. So that is my concern, and I wonder if there's something that can be done, if not, maybe something can be brought up that, you know, can prevent that. Thank you very much.
If you can give your contact information to the city manager, she can follow up on that, and somebody can take a look and see about the particular situation. Anybody else wish to make a public comment?
Hello, my name is Gary Gack, I live on Pine Avenue, Ward 3.
Just put your hand on the thing that raises the podium.
Oh, I see. I'll just take it down, my five seconds extra. Again, I'm Gary Gack, I submitted some written comments through the clerk, I think you have them in your hand, you may have not had a chance to read them yet, but I'll-- I just wanted to reiterate them tonight, and I'll read part of it here. The Tacoma Junction Task Force report is an admirable consolidation of the many issues that exist and were recently investigated, but I want to comment specifically on one critical shortcoming I see in the report in the Traffic Safety and Movement section. On page 46 is traffic option number four of the high-impact modifications. This is the X-crossing for Sycamore and Carroll, and I would like to tell you that this is the best solution for improving the traffic and safety movements at the junction, but has received very little attention in the report. First of all, the report didn't include an illustration when most of the other options did, so that was why I provided an illustration. I assume that was printed with the comments as well. And I'll go through just a few of the advantages, I can't get through all of them. But the first and foremost is that configuration provides the shortest distance across the roadways, about 36 feet, and it's the easiest pedestrian connection between the Co-op and Carroll Avenue businesses. And this is the number-one desire that was reiterated throughout the report over and over again. We want to be able to get from the Co-op and walk across to the Carroll Avenue businesses. And in my mind, this reconfiguration makes that the best connection. The reconfiguration also provides easy pedestrian access throughout the entire East Junction, as I call it, East Junction and West Junction, and includes better bus bay pull-offs, which is another reiterated complaint about it. It's the better bus bay pull-off from northbound and westbound predominantly, and that avoids the blocking, buses blocking traffic. With that, there's some other things in my written comments of other advantages, and then in my written comments, I point out some of the weaknesses and some of how I would address some of the weaknesses. First and foremost, about the state highway concerns and historic district concerns, which I think can be dealt with, and it's a fear that doesn't need to be overriding in your considerations. So to get to the end, I think the truly bold vision for Tacoma Junction that the council could take requires doing the high-impact improvements to the built transportation infrastructure, and that's for pedestrians, that's for buses, and that's for cars. Pedestrians first and foremost, to my mind. The better the urban infrastructure in the neighborhood, then the greater the chance for successful business development and enhancement of the community places, which is the goals and in my mind, the secondary goals, only because first, you get the infrastructure done first. It would create a better walkable neighborhood. I suggest the council needs to consider continued detailed investigations into this high-impact option, with serious consideration for funding and implementing the construction of a four-way intersection at the East Junction. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And we did get the drawing with comments. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. One, the one that's perhaps most surprising, but as many of you know, my wife works for a U.N. agency that's headquartered in Rome, Italy, and she has been looking into getting a job at headquarters there in Rome for some time now. And we found out last week that that job has come through. So I will be retiring from work and resigning from the city council at the end of May. I'll be going to Rome in early June. I'll stay there for a couple of weeks to get set up, and then come back and pack and move. The job is for about three years, when she can retire, and after that, we plan on coming back to Tacoma Park. Of course, I'm very excited about learning Italian, taking Italian cooking lessons, learning about Italian art, traveling around, et cetera. I'm also a little bit anxious about the whole thing. I'm sure we'll have many opportunities to talk about it, but I want to say at this point how much I've enjoyed working with all of you and learning from all of you and from the public as well. Being on the council has been a great honor for me and a privilege. I've really enjoyed serving the residents of Ward 5. A little operational note, the city will hold a special election to fill the seat between 45 and 60 days after my resignation becomes effective at the end of May. I believe that's the way it works, and there'll be more information forthcoming. So that's one big announcement. The other, an entirely different matter, is shifting gears completely. A number of the council members have been talking about kind of one-day events that the rec department would put on. We were thinking of things like the Tacoma World Festival, that has been discussed some, and other similar events to celebrate the many cultures in town and to bring together the diverse communities that we have in Tacoma Park. And we've talked with the director of recreation, we've talked to others about this, and I'm kind of urging or asking for a straw vote, or some other way we can essentially direct the city manager to look into this, put it in the budget, and come back with some proposals. So should I make a motion?
Make a motion, and it will be seconded by several people up here.
I'm assuming that--
Yeah, we're not really in session, but, you know, public comment.
Yeah, public comment and straw vote for some potential direction to the city manager.
Exactly. So I'll move that.
You articulated a little, once again.
The idea is to have one-day events that could be as frequent as once a month, kind of depends on how it all works out. That are a combination of rec department staff and volunteers. This is-- I like the idea of doing single-day events because it doesn't commit us to, you know, weeks of a program that may or may not succeed. This way, we can find out whether this kind of thing will work. And there are a number of folks in the community, several of us have met with community people who are really excited about doing this kind of activity. The idea is to involve as many different parts of Tacoma Park as possible. And I know others will have things to say.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that we know what we're asking for. I mean, as you say, a series of one-day events, or some one-day events. At this point, I think what I've heard you say is that we're basically asking the city manager, as she prepares her budget proposal, to include funding estimates for a Tacoma World Festival, and maybe some other one-day events.
Yeah.
And I think we need to be more than-- I think we need to be more specific of what we're looking for if she's to come up with estimates on it, so.
Well, there are a number of possibilities that come up. I know Greg and I talked about doing some, one of my personal favorites would be a bike tour of the hills of Tacoma Park. We could have a short one for kids, a longer one for, you know, adults. There are possibilities for--
It might be the other way around, but go ahead.
It might be the other, it depends how, yeah, I suppose we could have a senior one for really short seniors.
As long as it was all downhill.
As long as it-- well, that's possible, too. Which side of the hill we own.
Well, the green commuter in Tacoma Junction does sell power-assisted bicycles, so--
Yes, exactly.
So it sounds like the desire is to maybe get some information on a range of possibilities on what might be needed in the budget, both for recreation and depending on the type of activity. If it was a bigger thing, like some of the descriptions I've heard of the World Festival, it might involve things other than Recreation Department, might also involve Police Department and Public Works.
Right.
So it sounds like the type of thing that's being articulated is to ask the city manager to come up with some information on a range of possibilities. Is that something that the city manager would be able to work with, or do you need something more than that?
Probably need a little bit more than that, to be honest. Mr. Clark, Recreation Director--
I noted not including funding for the World Festival. He included some funding in his budget submission for, I believe, a couple of community events. As the mayor alluded to, when you have large-scale community events of the scale of, for example, the Street Festival, the bulk of the cost is actually coming from police and public works, and if those two departments alone are in the range of $8,000 to $10,000 for staff overtime or other time, and several days of work. So I kind of needed to have a sense, as Councilmember Siemens was alluding to, of the scale of the events that you have in mind, the extent of staff organization versus volunteer organization, using the Street Festival example. The staff provides a lot of logistical support, but other than that, we're not really involved in the actual planning of the event. And part of the reason I want to know that is it is material to work plans for the staff that are currently being developed, for example, next spring. And by the collective bargaining agreements, particularly for certain employees, those work plans have to be in place, and we can't be kind of throwing things at bargaining members, employees, without some sort of pre-planning. It's basically, that's going to be a major focus of their job, and that needs to be identified well in advance of their work plan being developed. So I don't know that now's the time to do that, but I would ask, Mayor, that either that be worked out during the budget process itself, or that the council, if it has a specific vision, that perhaps a work session could be held in the next week or so, so I can get the numbers in the budget.
Okay. Councilmember Grimes, you have your hand up, and then Councilmember Siemens.
Yeah. I think we recognize on the council, and members of the public should be aware, that this is an example of a cooperative initiative that involves community members and community organizations and the city, the city council members, and that that is very much the kind of thing that I know I, and I'm sure other council members, would like to encourage city-community partnerships. So that I know that the members of the community who are involved in this initiative, including several members of the rec department, other people, I'm sorry, of the rec committee and other people, would very enthusiastically help provide information that would give some scoping to this event, that would allow the city manager to flesh out the staffing requirements and all of that kind of stuff, as the city manager needs that information.
Okay. Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Davis calling.
Thank you. I think we're talking about too many things at one time. I think, first of all, the Tacoma World Festival is something that has been recently talked about, and is of a, maybe a different magnitude than some of the other things that Councilmember Snipper has mentioned. And that maybe we could give clearer direction to the city manager about a festival, a one-day event, and kind of what's entailed, and what kind of volunteer support there would be for that, and kind of refine that down to specific requests for this year's budget. And then the other piece of it that Councilmember Snipper talked about was more of a philosophical approach that we would like to see with the Recreation Department, where we do several one-day events. And I think at this point, what I would think might be appropriate is to ask the Recreation Director to come back with some suggestions of the types of events that he thinks might be appropriate and fall within the same goals of trying to attract a broad range of residents that we have here in the city. So I'd like to kind of make those two separate proposals, if that's agreeable with Councilmember Snipper.
Okay. Councilmember Davis calling.
This is a vision that I've had for a long time in my brain. The good news is, there are a bunch of people in the city who got together and actually put it on paper. It's to, I guess, to celebrate our rich diversity. We talk about a rich, diverse community, we don't always see it happening. And the game plan here is to actually bring all of it together in one space. Specifically, I'm specifically talking about the Tacoma Park World Festival. It's really exciting to see the Recreation Committee, all the different volunteer groups coming together, and then getting volunteers from the community as well. And it's a little bit different than the Street Festival, I think, because that's basically, "I think," she says, the Old Tacoma Business Association that runs that one, and the Folk Festival is, I'm going to call it an ad hoc group, but that may not be what it is, it's, you know, something different than that, but it's not actually the city of doing the groundwork. And I think if we all actually wrote down all the months of the year, we're going to find out that there is something that the Recreation Department does as an activity almost every month. It doesn't, you know, if you look at all the things that they do, there's something almost every month. Notwithstanding, Councilmember Snipper's bike idea, I think that's a great idea, too. So, and I'm going for the short toddler one, that would be the one that I would be on, the children's one. So I'm definitely in favor of this, this is terrifically exciting. I'm, as I said, I think in an email today, I'm not surprised that Jen Wolford came up with a game plan within hours. I was impressed with the way that the group threw together, I shouldn't say threw together, because it did not appear to be that way, the Martin Luther King-- Thank you, I needed that word-- --pulled together Martin Luther King Jr. celebration was awe-inspiring and heartwarming. And this is, this seems to be the same kind of, it has that same context. So, there you go.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz, just before, recognize you, I was just going to say that this is sounding more and more like a full-fledged discussion, agenda item, like we're doing an ad hoc one and doing council comments. So I want to try and do as little of that as possible, and it sounds like we'll need to, I'm taking it, people want to do this, and that we'll need to have an agenda item very shortly, that we can notice the public that we're going to do this and have a little bit more discussion about it. Councilmember Schultz. And I'm not going to recognize the rest of the lights coming on, because this is council comment, and we're going to--
Oh, I got council comments, though.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it wasn't my idea to have this discussion. I'm pleased to have it, nevertheless, particularly because I'm going to allow, since Mr. Snipper's going to be stepping down, I guess it's okay for him to take advantage of these kind of situations.
But not for anyone else.
But not for anybody else, and I don't want this to be my public comment. But I will say, partly in support, that the idea of doing things that bring together and help to unify this city in a true sense of the word, rather than just a lip service sense of the word, is truly one of the most important things as a city that we can do. But I get discouraged because a lot of these good ideas that come up about having special events always seem to come back boiled down to the idea that while there'll be a lot of volunteers involved, it always ends up that somewhere or another, the Recreation Department or the city is going to be relied upon to make it all happen, and to come up with the money to do it. And, you know, at this point, I'm going to defend very hard our city's staff and their workload, which is extremely stressed as it is. While positions, vacant positions are being filled now, as we speak, some of them, the Recreation Department is today currently down three people, there's just no time for these ideas. And if organizations-- And if organizations and people want to get together and put on events, kind of like a, like you would a potluck supper, you know, where the volunteers actually do the work and figure out where to get the money from, you know, I'd be very much in support of it. But as at this point in time, the most I think I'd be happy to support would be entertaining the formation of a council-supported study group to get together and figure out, to elaborate on Ruben's idea, which I think is a good idea. But I just don't want it to all of us, all of us sort of say, oh, this is a great idea, we'll just get the Recreation Department to help us figure out how to do it. I think we need, I think we need to spend some time, get citizens in, together to think this thing through. Thanks.
And I think that's kind of where this process is, because the people who were urgently talking about it, were talking about it for this year, May or June, and the plan now is that it would be a year from this May or June, and that's why the discussion is to get some information into the budget, so that planning can be done ahead of time, and it's not a short, short-time process with some of those attendant difficulties that Councilmember Schultz articulated. So my sense is that the council wants to articulate a little bit more of a vision of what this should be, and therefore enable the city manager to be able to come up with some numbers, and so that we can consider this as part of the budget discussions that are upcoming. So I will schedule an agenda item for this ASAP.
Right.
Okay. Now, back to council comments. Have you finished?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels calling.
Is he going to be able to do that until May?
No.
That wasn't a comment, that was me making jokes. Okay, thank you, Mayor Williams. First, I just, a quick comment about the tornadoes in the Midwest. My heart goes out to the people who lost, who have been devastated by the recent tornadoes. I believe there were at least 98 on Friday. My very good neighbor is from Henryville, Indiana, a town about 3,000, which was basically wiped off the map last Friday. His family home was saved, as were his parents, but many of his lifelong friends have lost everything, including some of their lives. It's very sad, and the destruction is actually almost unbelievable. I just had to make that comment. And second, and on a much happier note, I'm giving myself a redo of any, for any of my comments about the newsletter, it may have sounded negative last week. You all should have received your newsletter in the mail on Saturday. All right? Gold stars to 12 pages of great information for everyone who lives in Tacoma Park. The rather new layout, and the new header and the new green and white are interesting, are excellent. In this month's edition, there's a very special treat, the Recreation Department's Spring and Summer Guide, and as the Recreation Committee puts it, building community through recreation. So if you may have mistakenly set either of these two publications aside, retrieve them. There's a great storehouse of upcoming activities and other stuff. The best is on page two, the under the fold, at the bottom of the page, and it talks about Ward Nights, Ward Three Night is April the 2nd. So make sure you read your newspaper from one cover to the other, it's really important, especially the back page, tells you everything that's going on at Tacoma Park through the whole month of March.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Congratulations, Councilmember Snipper. As I sent an email to you, I envy you, but, you know, we'll miss you here, too. So I have three things. One is I traveled to Annapolis this last Friday to testify in favor of House Bill 1096, which would eliminate a, an exemption granted to Maryland financial institutions from personal property taxes that most businesses, but not all, in Maryland pay, including my own. I don't think that that's going to go through, but it's worth the support. So two events that I want to mention. One is on Saturday evening, March the 24th, there'll be a celebration of the Tacoma Voice. It is a fundraiser and a celebration, as the Voice is in a period of transition, and that will be at the Capital City Cheesecake on Carroll Avenue, Saturday evening, March the 24th, at 7:30. You can get more information by visiting tacovamvoice.com. You'll see something to click on, on the right side of the page, that'll take you to the page with detailed information. And then last thing is Art Hop, which is a now annual event, is taking place the weekend of March 24th in Old Tacoma. I think the figure is something like 29 businesses are hosting 34 artists, and it's a great chance to see local art and visit local businesses. The place to go for information there is arthopt Tacoma dot com online, arthopt Tacoma dot com, that's March 24th and 25th. Thank you.
With regard to the upcoming agenda, and I realize, Mayor Williams, that you said that it was subject to imminent change, I noticed that the side, the resolution adopting the policy for sidewalks has been advanced up to March 12th, whereas before, recently, it was looking as though it was March 29th. And I know that there's a number of people in the city who are anxious to speak at that time on that subject, not that they haven't spoken about it before, but it's still nevertheless the subject of some interest. And I'd just like to note, for the record, that this sidewalk policy, I gather, is scheduled on the rolling agenda for our next city council meeting, March 12th, and I wanted to ask if this, our city manager, if you anticipate that that might, since it's listed as tentative, that that might get bumped?
I don't believe so. I think the mayor had asked that it be moved up from its prior placeholder.
Yeah, so I think it'll stay where it is.
Okay, so that's, that should be, let this be known, then, that next week, this is going to be on the agenda, the sidewalk policy issue. I wanted to say to Councilmember Snipper that it's going to be hard not having you on the city council. I'm going to miss you greatly. In some respects, I've tried to emulate your behavior, which would refer to your succinctness, which I lack. I wish I could be more brief, but I'm terrible at that sort of thing. But he did tell me secretly that once he moves to Rome, that all are welcome to come visit, if you live in Tacoma Park. All you have to do is to bring your Washington Gas or Pepco monthly bill to prove that you are a resident of Tacoma Park, and they have, their house has a big mansion, they have many rooms, and all Tacoma Parkins are welcome. I intend to be there as quickly as I can. Back to more serious subjects, I just want to say to Gary Gek, who spoke here just a few minutes ago, that I did, in fact, carefully read your proposal, and I think it's been an excellent idea. I'm not endorsing it at this point, I can reserve that for another time, but I think it's the kind of, it's the quality level of proposal that I hope to have seen more of in the Tacoma Junction report that we've gotten so far, and it's the sort of thing that we're going to need to do more of, to look at actual ways of solving some of these really tough problems. So I thank you for that, I just wanted you to know that I thought it was a useful item that you provided to us, so thank you for that. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. I was going to say something, Councilmember, oh, there he's back. I think we'll all be, sorry to lose you from the council. We'll get to savour your last few months here, and we'll hope that you continue in the same vein that you have always worked on the council, and it'll be very valuable to have you here through the budget discussion, and we're very grateful that the timing works out that way, and we will-
I pushed very hard for that, by the way. I thought that would really be unfair.
So we look forward to having the opportunity to continue working with you for a little while longer, and we will come up with an appropriate way to honor you as you get to the time where you're going to be leaving us. I also just wanted to mention a couple of things that are either upcoming or that I went to last week. One thing that I went to last week was my quarterly meeting of the Local Government Advisory Committee on the Chesapeake Bay, and we had some very interesting speakers and discussions, and one of those, I love all of the acronyms you get to deal with, and one group of people was there from NIFWIF, which is the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And it was, they had a lot of information that basically said they have $4 million that they're looking to spread around to local governments, and it sounded like there were some real possibilities for us, for getting some funding for some green initiatives, and I was particularly thinking of the Flower Avenue Project. So I have information on that, and I'll be sharing that with the city manager and staff, because they had a list of who had taken advantage of that money, and Montgomery County, Rockville, and Gaithersburg had all taken advantage of it, but Tacoma Park was not on the list. So I spoke with them, and they said, oh, please apply. And upcoming events remind my colleagues that tomorrow is the Montgomery County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League luncheon, an opportunity to lobby our senators and delegates in Annapolis, and that's tomorrow from 11, 11 or 11:30 until 1?
1:00 or 1:30.
Somewhere in there. It's all kind of 11, 11:30, 1:00, 1:30. And then the second one that's happening this week, that's the same type of thing, it's not the Montgomery Chapter, but is the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments on Thursday. And I will be going to both of those, and if anybody wants to potentially get a ride, that can happen. And the other thing that I'm going to be doing on Thursday is I'm going to have the opportunity to talk to fourth graders and fifth graders at Roland Terrace Elementary. That's one of my favorite things to do as mayor, and I hope to be able to report on some of the interesting discussion and comments that transpire. They're always interesting. And the fifth grade class I'll be speaking to about if I were mayor, as part of, or fourth grade class, if I were mayor, and that's part of the annual competition, and I'll be one of the judges in the essay contest this year. So it's always interesting to talk to kids about what if they were mayor, what would they do, and what would they like to know. Any further council comments? Okay, city manager's comments.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. How about a legislative update? Anything?
Not that I'm aware of, the deputy city manager was actually out of the office today.
Right, okay, just wanted to check. So we will move along to our first item, which is a presentation from the Police Department of the annual report. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Tonight I report to you on the 2011 Department Annual Report, which should be in front of you right now. I would add that I've also, come before you tonight, I've completed five years of service to the city. This report will highlight our accomplishments in 2011, and a five-year comparison of crime statistics. I will also discuss with you some of our new and old programs that were on in 2011. The year 2011 proved to be very deadly for law enforcement. More law enforcement officers were killed by firearms than in many prior years. Officer safety and survival has been the main goals of our training this year. We had two officer-involved shootings this year. In both cases, our officers performed their duties in an exceptional manner. The Capital One shooting in January became a worldwide story, which put our department in a national and worldwide spotlight. We, as a department, continually trained for these types of incidents. On this snowy, wet, freezing day, working with Prince George's County and Montgomery County Police Departments, we successfully ended a robbery and saved six hostages while on a worldwide stage. I've never been prouder of the jurisdictional cooperation on this day. The bottom line is, everyone went home safe and sound. In December 2011, an incident occurred at the Sunoco Gas Station on New Hampshire Avenue and East West Highway. A deranged individual confronted a city resident and critically stabbed him 13 times. Our officer arrived on the scene and administered life-saving measures which saved this individual's life. Additional officers pursued the suspect who drove into Prince George's County, where he crashed into three cars, injuring others, attempted to carjack a person, and assaulted another one. Tacoma Park officers confronted this suspect, who refused to comply with the officer's directions. He attacked an officer who was going for their gun when deadly force was used. The victim from Tacoma Park, who was critically injured, whom many in this room know, continue to recover today, and I might add, on Sunday, he visited Roll Call to thank the officers that saved his life, which I find just phenomenal. They really had a great meeting. It's the first time he's met the officers, other than that night, which I don't think he remembers too much. Our review of crime statistics for 2011 show a 13.5 decrease in Part I offenses. Of significance was the decrease in robberies, burglaries, and thefts. With the completion of five years, I had a crime analyst do a five-year comparison of Part I crime here in this city. Crime over the last five years has reduced by 25.3 percent. The most significant reduction is robbery, which has gone down 54.7 percent. When I arrived here five years ago, we were in the midst of a robbery spree down in Old Town, which was the main thing that was on many residents' minds. During my first years, and even my second year here, as I went to many community meetings, robberies on the street and of businesses was a big concern of our residents. I now like to highlight some of the old and new programs that we worked on this year, and be brief. Our speed camera program, this year we added a camera in the 900 block of East West Highway, as with all our cameras here, to reduce speed and to reduce accidents. And I think this is a well-placed camera which will help us. We've had some really serious accidents at that location. This camera went up in October. We'll be preparing to come before the council once again, as we've done speed studies, surveys on Carroll Avenue, coming out of the junction, and see the need for two additional cameras, which we will be bringing for approval during the next year. Our nationwide prescription drug take-back program, where residents bring prescription drugs or any medicines that they want to destroy, has proved to be very successful. On both occasions, which was April 30th and October 29th of last year, we had numerous residents come to the station and turn over to us drugs for destruction. In attending one of these programs and talking to our residents on the first time, it has proved to be a program that many people came in with stuff that had probably been in their medicine cabinet for years, many people that were caregivers had pills, and it proved to be a very valuable program, which we'll be doing again this year. This year at Christmas, we collected toys for children of domestic violence. This was most successful as a result of our residents and departments' generosity. We partnered with Angels Against Domestic Violence, which is headed by Anna Valdez. Now, what makes this more significant? Anna Valdez, for those that have been on the council, was involved in December of our first year here in a shooting where she was a victim, where she was brutally beaten, and Officer Angela Donovan saved her life by kicking down a door and shooting the suspect who was attacking her at the time, and her children. Anna Valdez is one of those stories that you're very happy about when you're in my business. She put her life back together, she heads this domestic violence organization now, which she's gotten grant money for. It's stationed over on PG side of Tacoma Park, in Langley Park, I mean, and we've worked with her, and we continue to work with her, Diana Dean, our domestic violence coordinator. She definitely targets- Diana Dean, our domestic violence coordinator, she definitely targets Hispanic families as being Hispanic, and it's been a great program. And it's one of those stories that make you feel good inside. And we really feel good about Anna, because we saw her at her worst and saw how she got back on her feet, and now serves our community. As we've done in each report, we talk to you about our arrests, who we've arrested, where we arrest them from, and how the breakdown is. Once again, this year, we arrested people from outside the area. 29 percent were from outside of Tacoma Park. 18 percent were from Hyattsville. 17 percent from Silver Spring. 12 percent from DC. There's not much change from 2010, if you go back and compare the figures. Part I arrests, which is what our crime reports are based on, 32 percent came from outside the four main areas. 26 percent were Tacoma Park residents. 17 percent were Washington, DC residents. 13 percent were Hyattsville. And 12 percent was Silver Spring. Those numbers didn't really change too much either, which is interesting. They stay pretty consistent, and after five years, we've got a good idea basically where our arrests are coming from. As you can see, it's spread out pretty evenly among the jurisdictions. We are seeing more and more people are coming from outside the main places that surround us, which is interesting to look at. Last year, we talked about drug offenses, so I got you some a little bit more data. Once again, majority of our arrests are from outside Tacoma Park. 21 percent are residents. 30 percent from all other areas. 20 from Hyattsville. 19 from Silver Spring. And 10 for DC. One of the questions asked last year was, "What's the breakdown of drugs?" 42 percent of our arrests are for marijuana, which is nationwide. That has went up, as the potency of marijuana has increased over the last five years. Our DUIs were 24 percent. Cocaine arrests were 10 percent. Liquor law violations are 14 percent. That was the biggest decrease. We've had less drinking in public arrests made this year, which is a good sign. And all other drugs, which we include heroin, pills, methamphetamines, were 10 percent. One of the numbers that I find very interesting is, of our arrests, people with a prior record, 79 percent of the people we arrested in Tacoma Park last year have a prior record. Without a record, it's 21 percent. There's a 2 percent swing this year in those numbers, so they stay pretty consistent. Majority of the people, as you can see, almost 80 percent that we arrest here in Tacoma Park have prior criminal records. This year's National Night was a little bit different. We had it in a new location, which I think proved to be very good. It really did help that the governor decided to pick us out to attend, because we had our best attendance ever. The part that I was very happy about is we saw more residents from throughout the city, so we had a very diverse crowd. And that's the thing we've been encouraging, to get more people in the city involved. My Maple Avenue stall, which have always been there in the last five years, but this year we were able to draw from other parts of the city, which I think is important. One of the programs we started this year, that several members on the council have been wanting to start, is our community outreach program. Carla Magnay was selected. As I told you, we needed the right person to start the program, and we needed to be in the right position in the department. And this year, it proved to be the right time. We are targeting youth. We're working very closely with the recreation department on both youth and senior programs. We're working with businesses. We had our first Citizens Academy, which Councilman Daniels Cohen attended, and I know he's one of my biggest supporters, for more people to attend it. We've started Neighborhood Watches. We had a VIN etching. We had a Take 25, which is a program for parents, explaining what they need to look out for their children that can become missing or exploited. We've done several child personal safety programs. I could go on and on, but I think it's in the report, free to read. But I am very pleased with the start of the program, especially in the area of working with youth and seniors. We're doing a lot of work in that area now, and the business community. Our gang unit continues to be active enforcement. The part that I think was brought up when we first talked about the gang grant is education and prevention. And we're doing a lot in that area. Our gang unit is making many presentations. Any child we come in contact with that we believe is a gang member, we send a letter to their parents, explaining to them our meeting with them, or where we met them on the street, asking them if they would like to meet with us, so we can discuss it and possible ways to prevent their child from becoming more involved. And this program has continued to be active this year. Our canine unit lost one of our dogs this year, who died a natural death. We have replaced that canine, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that at our annual awards banquet. The key to our canine unit is that all our training is now done through Montgomery County. What makes this significant is that Montgomery County is considered one of the best trainers of dogs in the metropolitan area. Previously, for the first couple of years that I was here, we had to go to Pennsylvania and pay for that training. Obviously, we get the training through Montgomery County, and we don't have to put any money out, and their trainers are some of the best in the country. So, it's been a very plus for us, in the sense that we're getting free training, and what I consider significantly much better training than we were getting previously, which is very important in running a canine program. One of my goals and visions was an emergency response team, which is something we've had to depend on from the county before. To form a team, it requires extensive training, qualification, and validation of you've been through the training and you meet certain standards. On August 26th of this year, our team went into active duty and is here to assist our community. Not just with hostage situations, it would be for robberies and things, all search warrants, forced entries into areas where we have a search warrant for forced entry, but to assist in emergency situations throughout the community. It's an emergency response team, it's not a SWAT team. It's a team that can be activated in emergencies to assist here in Tacoma Park. Our emergency management efforts continue. I think there's an extensive thing in our report on that. We continue to partner with the county. We did have a chance this year to put a lot of things into effect, which was August 27th and 28th, Hurricane Irene, which all of us in Tacoma Park will remember for quite a while. One of the most significant natural disasters we've had, at least on my watch here, is one who worked that night with the members of the city police department, our tree arborists, and members of public works. A team came together and worked well together to serve our community. We continue to do updated training on emergency preparedness. We work very closely with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, as you learned in their report a couple of weeks ago. Obviously, I'm going to make a pitch for obviously our emergency preparedness part of the position. We want emergency preparedness and supervising in the communications center. But I think it's important that the city continue to upgrade its efforts. I think as a city, we have a responsibility to our residents in emergency situations to provide the best service possible and to be ready to respond to any kind of a natural disaster or man-made disaster. Conclusion. 2011's been a very busy year, with many noteworthy accomplishments. We continue to provide our residents with up-to-date information in real time. We continue to partner with the community and work together. The Police Chiefs Advisory Board continues to be a vital part of an advisory to me on what the department needs to do and how we're doing our job. After five years, I believe I can say our community is safer, and we do have the trust and support of the council than the community. We continue to operate at full strength and are attracting the best and the brightest to our department these days. In final conclusion, I would like to thank the men and women of the department for the job that they do every day to reach this point. I would like to thank Kathy Plevy, my executive assistant and public information officer, for all the hard work and tireless effort to put this together. And a special thanks to my boss, City Manager Matthews, for her trust and support for me and the department, which plays a vital role in our success. And with that, I'll welcome your comments or questions.
And I'll start off with a comment or two and a question or two. First, let me say, it's been wonderful to see the improvement in public safety in the city in the last five years during your tenure. And a big part of that has been the communication that the department has had, both in reaching out to the community and getting communications back. I know that everybody has been pushing the point that the community is the eyes and ears of the police department, and I think there's a much better two-way street of communication between the department and the community. And it shows in the kinds of things you're reporting and the efforts that you've undertaken. And I think it's a real, shows real improvement. And it's something that I think we're all glad to see. And it's a win-win-win. And so, it's very helpful to see in this report, a lot of these efforts. And one thing I noticed in particular that is what we always say, but it's nice to see the figures to back it up. When you look at the speed cameras and you give us the information on the reduction in accidents, we've said, you know, it's all about safety. It's not about the money from the speed cameras. The money from the speed cameras certainly fills a hole where other monies have gone away.
I've heard it's a little helpful.
Yes, it is. But to see the numbers that, for the New Hampshire Avenue pair of cameras, that in the two years before the cameras went in, there were 413 collisions, and in the year, in last year, there were 10 collisions. So, that's a huge improvement in safety along there. And the number of collisions on Ethan Allen went from 32 collisions to one. And it's, that's mind-boggling, that scale of that reduction.
The other thing I would add is, you don't see any pedestrians. And think about how many pedestrian accidents we were having when I got here five years ago. They've just about went to zero.
Yeah. So, I think that's a story that we can tell, and if the state legislature ever reopens the issue of speed cameras and wants to say that they're not effective and that, you know, it's various things, all we have to do is say, "Look, we've got the statistics. They've improved the safety of our community greatly."
I think you're going to see the state say the same thing. They use them in the work zones, which I go through every day very carefully. I think you'll see, because they've had several accidents where people were lost, killed, before they put them in. I don't think since they've had the speed cameras and the work zones, there's been anyone killed in the state of Maryland on state highways. So, I think they're going to be a buy-in to it also.
I think so. Just a couple of the quick things. You had some coverage of the false alarm reduction. And is that working? Is that, being in that Montgomery County program, is that working for us?
It has worked fine. I think, you know, last year we had one issue, which we've strayed out and advised the community on, and since that one incident, there's been no further problems. We did identify one alarm company, which was dropping the ball.
Right.
And working with Montgomery County, who's been excellent to work with, we were able to point it out to the company, what they did and what could happen if it continued in the future. And since then, there's been no problems. So, I would take it, they got their message. I sent a strong message to the area director here, which I think finally got through to him.
You also give the statistics on your internal affairs complaints, and I was wondering if you could just put those in perspective in terms of this past year's statistics and-
Well, I think the question is, the numbers went up from last year, and someone said, "Well, are things worse?" No, I mean, some of the complaints involve more officers, so that makes the numbers go up. I think the complaints have been consistent. I think I've been consistent in discipline, which I think Ms. Matthews would back me up on. I hold this department to a high standard. I think the word transparency's been used. We put this report out every year. It has the discipline in it that we do. I think, I don't see a problem, because there's been no rise in, what are the things we look for? Police brutality complaints, courtesy complaints. That hasn't been an issue. I think the complaints have been consistent, as they've been for five years. If we didn't have any complaints, then I don't think we were doing our job right, because let's face it, we work 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. And for me to get up here and tell you that every encounter is perfect would be a lie. I expect people are going to make mistakes, and I expect there are going to be complaints. But from my perspective, and we discuss, we go over this in our meetings with the city manager, I think it's been consistent. I don't see any changes.
Okay.
When we're up front, we put it out to the public each year, because we want the public to see what we do.
Okay, thanks. Just one final question. I know that in the newspaper very recently, there was some coverage of what various jurisdictions do with the time we keep the database on the license plate scanners. And they quoted us as keeping it for 30 days, and that wasn't my recollection. Can you just remind me?
We start out with one day. When I came before you last year, you gave me up to 30 days, and that's where we're at.
Okay, so we changed it, so that was-
I would also add, we're the only ones that had a significant policy in place.
Yes, yes.
The rest of them are still discussing it, and we've had a policy since day one, which I'm very proud of.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Albert Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce picked up most of my stuff already, but I do want to comment on a couple of things you didn't mention, Bruce. One is, my conversations with the officers is that morale has much improved over the last few years. And I attribute that to the leadership at the top. Thank you. The chief is primarily responsible for, because you set a model and a standard, and I think the staff responds to that.
Thank you.
And I'm very pleased about it. One thing you didn't talk about, at least one thing you didn't talk about in this very fat report, I would like you to highlight a little bit, or we could just direct the residents to go look at it. But beginning on page 61, you have programs that are currently being offered to city residents. And these include the Caring About Residents Every Day, in which you arrange to have residents call, and if they don't call, then you follow up. You have Citizens on Patrol, the Police Academy, notifications, the community notification list, which I think is really wonderful, home security surveys, house checks, internship programs, you know, the Move It Awareness programs, the ID, there's several ID-related ones, seniors programs, security surveys, boy, it's just youth outreach. There's just a whole panoply menu of things that the police department is now doing, and I have good things about, so I want to return that. And I encourage residents to take a look and find out what programs are available that the police are doing, because these programs are really quite wonderful, and the officers who come are quite impressive, at least according to the reports I've gotten. So, I hope residents will, you know, for their own benefit, take a look at these programs. Thank you.
Councilman Albert Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Okay. Awesome. Impressive. I mean, page after page after page. I guess, you know, aside from the Capital One and the Sunoco issues, Dietzel's passing was heart-wrenching. That was hard to read. The one thing that I always say when I'm out in the audience and get a chance to speak back, "Full-service police department. It needs to be on the front." I mean, full-service police department is really impressive. It's as good as any police department in, probably in the county, maybe even in the state. I know for five years, I was after you for the blue-eyed program, the blue-eyed signs, you know, the Neighborhood Watch. And we've got it now, and it's really exciting. I've got a citizens association that's probably going to start it up in Pinecrest, and I'm just thrilled, and I'm going to try and get every association in Ward Three to be involved in what I call the blue-eyed signs. I will call it Neighborhood Watch, since that's the official name of it. Let's see. National Night Out, I'm not going to get as involved as Councilmember Snipper and Councilmember, Mayor Williams did, but this year, changing the venue of National Night Out was huge, because it did represent the diversity of the community. It was, I'm sure that the mayor or the governor being there didn't hurt, but it still got all of the community involved.
The mayor being there helped.
Well, the mayor helped too, I'm sorry. He was there anyhow. He would have been there. But it was really exciting, because I've been involved in those for some number of years as well. And how do the residents get to take a look at this report? Do they go to www.-
There'll be a press release in the morning, and then we'll be shipping it upstairs. We don't put it out to you all, have a chance to review it, comment, criticize.
But they can pick up a copy?
The report will be online. If they want to print it out, obviously they can.
Yeah, I mean, they can go to the TacomaParkMaryland.org, so I can put that out to Ward Three.
Well, we'll be putting it out tomorrow morning in a press release to the community, so all the community will see where they can go. Obviously, tonight, we always present it to the manager and to you all first. Obviously, tonight is, we always present it to the manager and to you all first for comments, and then it will go out in the morning.
And I don't know if, if city manager Matthews mentioned to you last week, you got gold stars for me.
Yes, she did.
She did. You walked the walk, baby. You talked the talk. You, you said five years ago what you were going to do, and, and I think it was at Jen's house, it was at Jen Wolford's house, right after the, the robberies at the junction.
Robbery subway.
And, and you did, it's right here, and it didn't take five years for most of it to happen. It happened pretty fast. So it's, hats off, kudos, more gold stars. You guys, you all do a really great job. I really appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Bruce Schultz.
Yeah, I want to thank you for an excellent, very readable and comprehensive report. I think this is the best one we've, we've ever seen. And actually, I don't have any questions. I just have some comments.
That's okay.
No, I just, I, you know, it's, there's a, it's, I would just say this to anybody who's listening, there's just a wealth of really interesting information. And second, the, the trends are very positive. So I'm very proud of our police department. And I don't ever miss an opportunity to, to sort of back up what my, my fellow council member just said, I, you know, to remind people of how fortunate we are to have a full, a full-time police department here. I can vouch, since my, my house backs up to New Hampshire Avenue, not, not even seeing the, the astounding statistics with regard to the effectiveness of the speed cameras, I can vouch for the fact that I don't ever hear of cars colliding on New Hampshire Avenue. And it used to be just sort of the general background noise of the crunching of automobiles and the squealing of tires in that moment, split second, you wait for the thunder of, of metal against metal. And then you go, you know, in the middle of the night, roll over, dial the phone and call it in, because you just know that somebody's got to call it in. That's just stopped. And it's, one of the things I think's been really nice that I've picked up on is that we see our police officers everywhere in the community, as it should be. And talking to residents, I find that they kind of get to know the police officers, not, not in a friendly sort of way, but it's a familiarization. They know the, the officers by name, they recognize them when they go by in the police cruiser, or they see them out and about. And I think it makes a huge difference that we're just, we're not a large community with sort of anonymous uniforms circulating around and doing things. We actually know so many of the officers who work for us. And that helps, I think, people's perception of safety and security. So it's not just nice, it's, it's important. Another example was the successful police forum that we had last month in, I guess it was in, late January now. And we had like a very large number of Ward Six residents, as well as residents from Prince George's County come. Unfortunately, the Gazette newspaper that covered that event managed to find two or three people who expressed amazement and shock that we had crime in Ward Six and that there were gangs, kids running around doing things that they shouldn't be doing at a young age. And the reporter chose to interview those people at length and neglected to point out the whole essence of what this meeting was about, which was basically to inform residents of what the police department is doing, how it's coordinating with other jurisdictions, how its, its, its technology has improved so much in recent years that you're almost in a position where you can predict where the crime's going to occur before it actually occurs, which is one of the reasons crime is down, because the police are getting smarter and the criminals aren't, aren't getting smarter. In fact, they may be getting dumber. And I wrote a letter to the, to the, to the Gazette on that behalf, although I'm not sure it actually got published, but what the heck. And lastly, I just wanted to comment that I'm really, really excited about this emergency response team, because every, every time you hear about a tornado, like we heard about in Illinois and, and other places, you, I sort of, we can say to ourselves, you know, but there for the grace of God goes to Tacoma Park. And, and that these sorts of things can happen to any community, and there's, they're, by the very nature of these things, they're totally unforeseeable, unpredictable, and you don't know when they're going to happen. But the only thing you can do is prepare for all eventualities and set up the best darn communication system with citizens within the city, so that people know how to get help and can help each other. And I, that's, I think that that's one of the most vital functions that our department, police department can, can play in helping this, these emergency responses be realized.
I might add, in one of my other jobs in my life, was Louisville, Kentucky, where I worked for five years, and I had the experience of two tornadoes down there right on our border, which we assisted the other jurisdiction. And you can see it on TV, and you can see the destruction. Let me tell you, when you see it in person, it's one of those things that, it's been almost 10 years ago now for me, more than that, 12 years ago. I still remember that night, going to the scene and seeing what had happened. I also remember being in a bathroom with my wife and two dogs. As a police chief, I'm trying to be on the phone and listening to the radio as we were under a tornado warning where I was. It was scheduled to come right through our area. Fortunately for us and from the county that I worked in, it hit right on the border and didn't affect us, but we did, as, you know, working with neighboring jurisdiction, we had to do a lot of the emergency help because they were a very small department, weren't prepared for what happened. I saw it take out an entire residential community, and it is something you don't want to experience. So I think, I would add again, how important emergency preparedness is here in the city and how we must stay up on it and continue to improve in that area. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
And the city manager and I are due to go to a meeting in April in La Plata, which is commemorating the 10th anniversary of the tornado that went through there. Councilmember Schultz, Siemens.
We look a lot alike.
No, we don't.
Sound alike, too. Councilmember Schultz, Siemens.
Chief Puccucci, we thank you for coming tonight and for the report. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time repeating all the things you've heard from here tonight, but I do congratulate you and the many fine men and women that work for you and your department, not just on the report, but on all the work that led to the content in this report. So again, I, I compliment you and everyone in your department. I, again, I've said it before, but I'll repeat that I, I really appreciate the professionalism that you've brought to the department since joining as city staff. And I think that is a great deal of why we are where we are today. And I thank you for that. And that's not to diminish at all the, the fine work people do with your leadership. I just, again, compliment everybody involved with the, the high-profile events that went on this year. There were circumstances, put people into circumstances that no one should have to go through in their life, not just the victims, but the, the first responders too. And, and I know that they were life-changing events. I, I feel bad that people had to go through that, and I really am appreciative of the, the fact that there are people in this world who will step forward in those situations and, and work to the best of their ability to resolve the situation. And I think, as you said earlier, the fact that everybody that works for you went home that night, and those nights, is again, a major success there. I just, one thing that I didn't see in the report that I'm interested to get some feedback on is, I know that this, you know, this council and prior councils had established some restrictions on your department in the, the way that you deal with our immigrant population. And, and I know that in the past, you've been very open about your feelings of that. And I'd just like to see where we stand today with that. You know, things change over time. How are you, how are you feeling?
As I, I think I've said for, since that night, we haven't had any problems. I point to several times where immigrants felt comfortable enough in reporting crimes to us in Tacoma Park. We don't have issues with them. As I said, I support it, and when I go to meetings now, I brag about, well, we don't have any problems in our immigrant communities. And I always kid Tom Major, said sanctuary law works. I mean, yes, I, I had suggested changes, and I think everyone that's from knows, once the council rules, I am a soldier that follows it through. My men and women have followed it through. We don't have a problem with our immigrant communities. I've been to enough meetings where they've spoken out about other jurisdictions, and I think we have the support. I mean, day laborers, you know, we have to move them out periodically from the 7-Eleven down on the corner, the ones up on, by the restaurant up the road, we have no problems with them. They know what the barriers are that they can do. But I think they, people feel comfortable in reporting to us. I think they, I think we proved it in the first shooting my first year, which was after we'd had that debate with Anna Valdez. You know, we, we worked with her and a lot of people in the community to get her to where she is. And we worked with her after, you know, to help her in the rehabilitation. Sometimes people don't realize our victim assistant coordinator does a lot of things that don't go into statistics or go into reports, but we do with the community. And most of the people she works with is the immigrant community. So I think, I think the law, and I'm one to change it, I've been able to work with it, it hasn't cost us anything. There are no cases that anyone can point out to me where we didn't do our job involving an immigrant investigation. So I don't think there's a problem there. We do our job and we follow the law to the hill, and it hasn't affected us in Tacoma Park, at least at this point.
That's fantastic. Barb, I think he, he highlighted something we might want to consider about with the city newsletter, and that is the, it seems like the community should know more about the victim assistance and the, the work that Diana Dean does here in the city. I think it would not just be to puff our own chest up, but also to, to also let people know what is, what is available and what, what approaches work. And then lastly, I know that many communities have troubles or complaints about the way the police work with some of the minorities, both immigrant population, other minorities. And, and I'm not looking for an answer now, but I'd be interested to see more about how or learn more about how we measure our performance in that area, how we know, how we know that we really are treating people equally and appropriately.
Well, we do have one, one indicator, is our internal affairs complaint, so we were continually getting racial complaints, which has not happened. Another area that we're now with a community service officer, we're doing a lot more work with the various youth in our community, the minority youth, which is what we spend a lot of time with, especially here on Maple Avenue, which I know has been a pet project of yours.
Sure.
And I think we, we'll get more numbers as we get into, if you look at, and her report's very extensive of just what we've been able to do since we started this, I think we're just scratching the surface and will continue to work hard with the youth. One of the concerns, I think, and it may have been you who raised it to me when I first took over, was concerns about our relationship within the minority community. And I haven't seen problems. I think I've reached out to most of the minority leaders, and I think the fact that, I think you all know by now, if somebody has a problem, they can come see me about it. And we've usually jumped on problems. I try to be proactive, I think I have been, with the department and how we deal with problems. But I think we have a good relationship with the minority community. I don't think there's been problems. I don't, we haven't had any of the high-profile type problems you've seen in other jurisdictions. And you know, if we had a problem, it would be out there and we would put it out to you all. So I think we are on top of it. I think it is well. I think, I think there was a good relationship when I got here. I think it's been strengthened, and I think it's a lot better today than it was five years ago.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garbs.
Thank you. Well, I won't take anyone's time repeating the many positive comments that have been made about the Tacoma Park Police Department and its progress over the last several years under your command. I'll remark on two things that haven't been brought up. One is that it's my perception that the department has instituted a very effective staff development and retention plan, and that is very important to the future of the department. So thank you for that. And then, secondly, something that's very much behind the scenes, I want to recognize, again, my perception of your effectiveness working with city manager Matthews in negotiations with Montgomery County regarding the funding transfer payments for the police rebate and the tax duplication payments. Those are very important money. It all comes down to money as an enabler that helps you do your job. So I'll just add thanks on those subjects.
Okay. Thanks very much. Let me add one thing. I'd like to take credit for the retention, but I got to give the council credit, and I've done this before, not since you've been up there, sir. When the council enacted our Take Home program six years ago, because it was before I got here, that program has proved to be valuable. The investment you've made has given us stability. Your investment in our retirement program. I think we've negotiated fair with our unions, and I think we have good contracts with them. I think that makes for happy campers. I was back at one of my, my old department over the weekend, talking to their chief, and their problem has been retention. It was a problem I had when I was there, because it's in Virginia, they tend to ship around and who gives them the best salary. And their town, like many towns in Virginia, is going through some tough times. I think we're fortunate. I think you've taken good care of the officers. I tell them that. I think we have good negotiations. I think Ms. Matthews would back me up on that. But I got to tell you, the Take Home program was the best tool you gave me when I got here and was already in place, and it's just paid off. We've stayed at full strength. I got my cake in four months when I got here from Terry for getting us to where we're at, and I appreciate that. I always will remember that moment. We've stayed at full strength. We don't have the problems that you all went through for years. Montgomery County isn't stealing our people. We're now stealing people from other departments.
I appreciate you not letting that drop off, so I had to buy another cake.
Thanks very much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
We have two special session items. The first one is a resolution awarding small community grants. Somebody like to move that?
Move.
I'll second it.
Moved by councilmember Snipper, seconded by councilmember Schultz. And council comments on this? We talked about this a good deal, was it last week? And made some changes. We took the recommendations from the committee and tweaked them a bit, added a little bit of money, and we're going to go forward. Any public comment on this?
I just want to share, last year, we commenced the first Ethiopian annual cultural fest in Silver Spring, and we're now preparing to do that. And as I was preparing to do that, I looked at this opportunity, and A, it is on July 1st, there's a restriction to this fund, and B, it is out of our city, so I did not bother to invite the city. But after I did that, it dawned on me, this is a gift to Silver Spring, it's a Tacoma Park city to gift to Silver Spring. And I'm asking the county public partnership to be partner in the program. I'm asking the governor's community initiative to be partner in the program. I'm asking the White House Office of Public Engagement to be a partner in this venture. And, and then I, I, at the end, I'm like, I'm like, wow, how can I miss that? So next year, I look forward to make sure that our city gets high visibility. The last one costed about $70,000, and 15 entertainments flew from Ethiopia at the cost of $30,000. And I'm happy to say we were able to raise it from fundraising, including Ethiopian alliance and local Ethiopian business community. And the coming one is going to cost about $80,000 to $90,000. It's going to be a wonderful event. So I just want to share that with you. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Any other comment on this resolution? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that carries. And the second item in the special session is the first training ordinance modifying FY 12... And the second item in the special session is the first string ordinance modifying FY-12, that's the current budget amendment number two. City manager?
Last week, the council enacted budget amendment number two. And when the director of finance was entering all five and a half pages of transactions, one of the things she noted is that we had overlooked one transaction related to the supplemental funding that the council had approved for HVAC improvements at the community center. We noted all the transfers and all that. But what we neglected to do was to actually increase the project budget in the special revenue fund. So what is before you this evening is a modification of the ordinance you enacted last week, which would basically just recognize that increase in expenditures in that one line item.
So it doesn't really change anything? It just takes care of the bookkeeping?
Yes, but it's an important aspect of bookkeeping.
Okay. Somebody want to move that first string ordinance?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Grom, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. That completes our special session items. We'll take a short break and come back for our final item, which is the work session discussion of the Tacoma Junction Task Force report.
We should be out of here early, then.
It all depends on... Oh, I know what it was. We're back, and we're gonna take up the Tacoma Junction Task Force report priorities. And representatives from the task force are here. And what we'll do first is if you want to run through your priorities, and we'll have some discussion with the council. And then we'll kind of regroup and next steps and, I don't know. I'll ballpark that maybe we could do this whole discussion in an hour. It's 9:18, so maybe we can get out of here by 10:15.
All right. I'm Howard Cohen, and I'm representing the task force along with Roger Slago and Jeff Tronzo. And when we were here a few weeks ago, you might remember Roger brought up a collection of children's toys and illustrate the potentials and the challenges of the junction.
And you've brought them back?
I'm just gonna carry on the theme very briefly. We're here tonight in the role of Goldilocks. That is to say, we have searched for a solution that is not too big and not too small, but is just right. And it's pretty serious, because the junction, the success of the junction is going to require a balancing act. There are variety interests there, competing interests. There's pedestrian safety, there's traffic flow, there's commercial revitalization, there's environmental concerns. And taking them all into account, we have come up with the following six top recommendations. And I'm going to skim through them briefly, because you can get into them in detail. Number one, and this is the heart of the matter, everything flows from this recommendation, which is that we're asking you, as the council and as the city, to create a five-year plan for the junction. To actually get down to the nitty-gritty, set up goals, set up deadlines, and report back to all of us, the public, as progress is made. So that's number one. Number two, work with the state highway administration to deal with pedestrian and traffic issues. There are three points to highlight. One is a new crosswalk there. Number two is to finish the signalization upgrades that have been started but not fully brought to capacity. And number three, to create a baseline so that going forward, we're able to measure improvements or lack thereof. Number three, we have an empty canvas at the city-owned parking lot. We're asking you to start making something of that. Preserve the parking, but put in a pavilion, create, establish events there, dances there, set up craft fairs, for instance, and on an ongoing basis, bring in vendors like food trucks. At the same time, as I said, preserve the parking. Enough of it to make the junction function. Number four, the streetscape. Here, we're talking about extending the Carroll Avenue streetscape improvements that were postponed during the fire station construction. Has to bring the, if you are walking down Carroll Avenue and walk past the fire station, continue that good-looking wall and sidewalk artistry, at least up to the city parking lot. And put in trees and do what looks good, to make people aware that something is happening. Number four, in much the same way, oh, that was number four. Number five, take the requisite steps for redeveloping that lot. And that starts with an environmental assessment and looking at the wooded area in back and seeing how much of that needs to be preserved, how much would be available for development. Number five, that was number five. Number six. And this is, you know, something that we've talked about a lot in town, is making Tacoma Park more bike-friendly. And the geographic center of Tacoma Park is probably the junction. So if we're going to have a bike-share system here, we have to make the junction bike-friendly. And that's number six. Let me say one final thing. Having condensed our report to six top recommendations does not mean that we want you to ignore everything else in the report. We feel that's a really good blueprint for what should and can happen in the junction. But you asked us to bring our top recommendations here tonight, and we have.
Okay. If I can just get clarification on a couple of things in those. Oh, number two, where you talk about as soon as possible, apply completion of the improvements that you mentioned, work with SHA to gather baseline traffic and pedestrian data. And the question I had when I read that was, do we have baseline data now? Is there a need for baseline data before those improvements?
Well, I mean, I think that's a question better answered by SHA. There have been some periodic inventory of the traffic that flows through the junction. We tracked it back to 2008. And I don't, we're not aware of any since then. And I'm not sure at what point they would be willing to come in. Sooner is better, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah.
Just one comment on that, is that things have been in flux with the signal so much lately, that it's hard to know what would be a decent baseline until they just conclude all their planned improvements. We thought we could take a measurement then, and they could rate the performance of the intersections at that time. Maybe they would be fine at that point. But that would be the rational place to start.
Okay. And one of the main things that's holding up the work that they've started is getting the Pepco to do what they need to do.
Yes, that's right. Pepco needs to come in in order for the cameras that will monitor traffic, in order for those to work, we need some help from Pepco.
On number three, about the parking lot, the question that I had that wasn't in here, but I just want to make sure that it was part of what you're talking about here is, I was thinking about the deliveries to the co-op and how much that drives what space is available on the lot. So had you been thinking about, with all of these various pieces, about how that was going to play into it?
Well, none of us are parking lot engineers, but we, based on calculation, there's, you can estimate 400 to 450 square feet are needed per parking space in a lot. And that includes aisles that are shared among the spaces. And by that calculation, that paved area right now could handle 54 to 60 spaces. And there are 37 painted spaces now. Now, we know some of that area is needed for the storage building and access for delivery. But we still feel that surely you could clear out 10 spaces by consolidation, an area equivalent to 10 spaces, and do something different with that, perhaps on the heavy-duty concrete pad that was put in there for the temporary fire station.
Okay. Oh, and just the final thing that I just wanted to get clarity on in these, on number six with the bicycle issues. And I was wondering whether what you're talking about there builds on what was in the master plan for bicycle?
It does. There's been a lot of testimony and fact-finding about bicycle access in the junction over the course of the task force life, about what would and would not be permissible in terms of where bike lanes could be located. For instance, there was testimony that state highway would never permit bicycle lanes to be painted on the roadway in Tacoma Junction, and city staff had already exhausted that possibility. And because we're at the very early stage of redevelopment, we thought it was absolutely critical that we identify routes for bicycles, whether it's going to be adjacent to a sidewalk, behind a building, whatever. But we thought we need to take a bird's eye view and plan very, very early that this critical component of bicycle access is worked in before any other hardscaping is done.
Okay. That's helpful to understand. I just want to get those clarifications on these points. I'll go to my colleagues. Councilmember Groms.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back to the council with the hot points here. I'm curious, what estimation of public support do you see for each of the six recommendations? And how did you arrive at that estimate?
We had 11 outreach meetings over the course of the past year. The last one was, when was the last one? December?
Yeah.
December. And more than 150 residents participated in those meetings. And while they brought up a great many concerns and ideas and visions, some of the ones that came through most strongly, number one, was the desire for a better crosswalk to connect the north and south sides of the district. The desire for some kind of opportunities for cultural activities, possibly intergenerational activities. That was a repeated note that we heard in many different group meetings. The, I'd say of these six, number one reflects the consistent message that we heard, and Kay remembers this, to do something. That people are tired of waiting, they want to see a commitment on the part of the city. Obviously, traffic flow comes up a great deal. And while this idea of optimizing the lights seems like a modest proposal to many people who were at those meetings or who weren't at the meeting, it also is the most obvious and cheapest way to begin to move towards a better traffic flow and less congestion. So we feel there's strong support for that, even though many people are asking what else might be done that might involve changes to the roadways. I don't think anyone that we talked to at the outreach meetings would oppose improved use of the existing signals.
So 11 outreach meetings, 150 people consulted. As I recall, there were also intercept surveys and so on.
Yes. And business surveys.
And in terms of the advocacy, Councilmember Daniels Cohen, I'm sure will remind us when she gets the floor, of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association advocacy regarding the crosswalk. And that's something that we also heard from people who turned out to the council meeting a couple of months ago advocating crossing guard for that intersection. Many of them also supported a new crossing at Grant Avenue. So you feel that the recommendations here are well-supported in the community based on your research?
Absolutely. Just to take an example, you reminded me of the business surveys, that the business owners are themselves concerned that their patrons stay away, potential patrons stay away, because it seems too much trouble to park in the city lot and make your circuitous way across the intersection. And the number four, which looks, in a sense, just like do a little bit of beautification, that really is important to people. I don't know if I should mention the words. Some people dubbed the south side of Carroll from the fire station to the co-op "the scar."
Yeah, well, we did receive...
And they said we need to do something about it. But just a small piece of that, I'm sorry, would send a signal that, oh, change is on the way, and it's a more pleasant place to stroll.
Yeah. So we also received a petition signed by, I don't recall how many, maybe 30 or three dozen people just a few weeks ago, spearheaded by Wolfgang Mergner, about the issues with the sidewalk along there. And my recollection was that the streetscape project was supposed to continue into the junction. I'm looking at the city manager, or I guess Sarah Daines is here. No, that's not correct. Well, okay. Do you want to say something? Well, in any case, while you're coming up, yeah. So the petition noted the very bad shape of the sidewalk for a number of reasons, obstruction up and down, regarding ADA compliance, which we're trying to address in various parts of the city for that sidewalk. So, you know, that's an issue that we've heard about, just like the additional crosswalk and the signal timing independently of the task force.
The streetscape improvements that were done several years ago, that stopped right before the fire station, that boundary was somewhat arbitrary in the sense that those funds were awarded to the city through a bond that was approved by the state. And they had defined in the presentation of that particular project to the legislators that that would be the boundary line. Ideally, we would go through and do a second phase or a continuation of those streetscape improvements, but that is the reason why they were there.
I assume you'd be prepared to come up with an estimate of the staffing and other costs there, and whether there might be potential external sources of funding?
We can do that. The biggest challenge is going to be addressing some of the ADA issues that you've mentioned regarding the obstructions in the sidewalk.
Staying on the theme of public views, on item number three, restripe the city parking lot, close one entrance if advisable to increase the number of parking spaces. I'll note that what you are advocating here is return to the situation before the fire station was located in that lot, when there was only a single driveway where the concrete slab is now, and the spaces were striped so that there were more spaces. And the plans for the temporary fire station very clearly mark the additional driveway as temporary. I know that there was a discussion with some city staff about this, that some city staff views were in favor of the second driveway. So far as I know, there was no community consultation about the change that effectively happened. So I think it would be very much in order to restore what we had here, as your point number three lays out, restripe the lot, close that second entrance. And my recollection from my participation on the task force was that one means of closing could be to put large planters in the driveway so that the closure could be reversed without any significant cost if necessary. So I think that to... So I think that, to sum up, we have very abundant community views on a number of these points regarding signals and that additional crossing. We have a change that was made to the striping of the lot in the driveway without community consultation. And I would venture that a large proportion of the community would like to see the lot restored to the way that it was before the temporary fire station went in. We have independent community input, not only on the signals and additional crossing, but also on the state of the sidewalk on the side of the firehouse, from the firehouse over toward the TPSS co-op. So my read is that we do have a mandate for action on these points. Regarding the crosswalk that's advocated and the signal timing and all of that, it seems to me that by the conventions in state law that I've become familiar with because of the negotiations about a memorandum of understanding with the state, that it would be up to the state to pay for the additional signaling, and it would be up to the State Highway Administration, presumably, to do the timing and the traffic studies and so on, that in the past, the State Highway Administration has arranged for that at the request of the city. I believe that was in 2005, that the State Highway Administration contracted for some measurements that they paid for. So doing those measurements and adding the crosswalk and the signals necessary to support it, pedestrian signals, that is, not a vehicle signal, would be burdens that would be imposed mainly on the state with the city providing, of course, staff time to interact with the state. I'm curious if you have any idea about the magnitude of funding that would be required for the first point, demonstrate the city's seriousness of a program. What kind of funding are you thinking, if you have any figure in mind, would be required for that point in the next couple of fiscal years?
What do you have?
That's the wrong way to build about it.
No, this has to be decided in balance with all of the other needs of the city. So I don't think anyone on the task force is feeling like we want you to pour every available dollar into the junction. It does make sense to try to resolve issues at the junction before development really begins to kick in on New Hampshire Avenue, because then that will become a more immediate focus of attention. And the junction would be a node that linked from Metro out to, say, a new hospital campus development, and then on out Carroll, so maybe sort of a linear fashion. So this, I'm getting off track, but this is why a five-year plan now makes sense as opposed to some other time. How much money, Howard, you want to, you've had some comments, thank you.
Do you see need for a dedicated staffer or, you know, a dedicated full-time equivalence but amongst several staffers? What kind of magnitude you're thinking would be required here?
That seems more than is necessary, but what is necessary is to commit to a plan, and that, of course, will put pressure on you all and the staff, increasing pressure as time goes on, and will put financial pressure on the city budget as well. But in the beginning, this is not an expensive step, although we think it's absolutely necessary.
But some of these steps, the, you know, I would say, before I even say this, that I, it's my read that some of these things, the lot restriping, the additional crosswalk, the signal timing that would be carried out by the State Highway Administration, presumably, subject to confirmation, these could be done without having the five-year plan underway?
Those, yes, those could be done. And I just want to underline what's been said. Generally, speaking about all six recommendations, they have significant support, as has been said. In addition, the crosswalk, as an example, is something that is a win-win, which is to say, it doesn't, it solves the problem pedestrian safety, and it helps revive commercial interest, presumably, because right now, there is this perception that pedestrians are not safe in the junction. And it doesn't create any additional problems. And we try to look at solutions that are win-win, and I think you'll see that throughout the document.
Yeah, I'll make an observation, and then one more point, and then I'll wrap it up myself. Yeah, my observation is that I passed through the junction, driving, which I don't normally, at about 3:40 PM last Thursday, and I saw a flock, meaning 12 to 15 people, several adults, mostly kids, crossing directly from the Grant Avenue corner to over by the, over by the co-op, and they were scrambling across the intersection because of the signal timing issues that we all are aware of. And that, they'll be forced to use the crosswalk once the city gets our crossing guard out there, but when the crossing guard's not out there, there'll be a reversion to that kind of behavior. So it's clear to me, at least, that the pedestrian, that the safety issues are very pressing here, and that you have solutions. So I have one more question that I'll ask for right now. I wonder about certain points under number three, for instance, simple open pavilion, organizing events, food trucks and so on. Would you see it as workable for the city to outsource this work to the Old Tacoma Business Association rather than, that would mean that we wouldn't be taking work, we wouldn't be reassigning city staff and so on. And so there are two parts. Would that be workable and would you, no, okay, one part. Do you think that would be a workable approach potentially?
Yes, I mean, it's fine with RAS and OTBA, I think that's very workable.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I was absent when the Tacoma Junction Task Force was introduced to the city council a few weeks ago, but I have read it, actually read it on the airplane.
You're a good man for the term.
The interminable nine-hour flight was lightened, if you can believe it, by having access to that report. That shows you how awful the plane ride was.
It certainly does.
How great the report was.
That's what I meant to say.
That's right.
No, I, just, let me just keep focused on this, rather than talk about, it seems to me that there's a very obvious logic to many of the things that you're proposing here. And clearly, these are ones which I'm sure, it seems like most people probably on the task force and others could sort of say, yeah, these are certainly a priority. The first item reminded me instantly of the, of the task force on the environment that we just had a report from about a year or so ago, where their first priority was to get a commitment from the city, in this their case, to hire a sustainability coordinator. But in essence, it was the same thing, is that we've done this study, we've gone as far as we can as citizens to do this, and if there's going to be any life to this work and all the energy that was put into it, we need the city to come back with some kind of a commitment. You know, in the case of the sustainability coordinator, you know, that was discussed and debated and all that. And so it makes sense to me that your obvious first need is to get this commitment back from the city, that somehow or another, regardless of how much, you know, setting aside how much money it might take to do that, that we need, you need to hear from us, and we need to try to find a way to commit to, say, maybe a five-year plan or whatever it might need to be, and which implies staff time. My hope is, is that with the Tacoma Lonely Sector Plan basically done, design guidelines, all that, which has absorbed so much of our staff's time over the last three years, that, you know, more focus could be put on the Tacoma Junction, because I think it's such a vital intersection. I mean, from an economic point of view, it doesn't hold a candle to New Hampshire Avenue and the crossroads. But from a functional point of view, and it, you know, and other aspects, I think it's a terrifically important part of the city and deserves all the attention that we can give it, because I think it's, that area is grossly under-optimized from an economic point of view, and from a, you know, a retailing point of view, and just all these various issues that have been raised in the report. So the first item, I'm real comfortable with. You know, exactly what it'll look like, I'm not sure, but it's the logical place to start. The second one seems equally logical, is that the structure of that intersection, the Tacoma Junction, is really all about vehicular and pedestrian movement. And I agree that until you can, you can develop, you can get the traffic signalization stabilized, figured out, and sort of coordinated to the SHA satisfaction and the city's satisfaction, you can't really even begin to assess what needs have to be accomplished in terms of moving vehicles. I mean, let's not even think about roundabouts or medians or, you know, rearranging the structure of the roads like Mr. Gek was talking about earlier tonight. You can't even begin to talk about that until you've got an intersection that works at its optimum in the current condition that it is. So then you can begin, once that's figured out, then you can begin to sort of say, well, we've optimized it with the traffic signalization, and we know what the pedestrian demands are, even with a crossing guard and all that. And now, so then we can begin to figure out what can be done from a traffic engineering point of view, to come up with, you know, really good solutions that will solve all these problems, which means then, and so when you get that done, then it's time to start thinking about the long-term uses of the city lot. I'm comfortable with the idea of interim uses, like you've mentioned here. It's certainly not going to cost the city a lot of money, and certainly that lot can be put to better use than it is right now, apparently, including more parking, more efficient parking. And so that's well and good. I guess I'm more concerned, you know, about the long-term, 10-year-out future for that lot, and whether the city can find a developer to develop it in a way that's utterly compatible with the historic district and the adjacent residential communities, but still add an economic jolt to that intersection so that the co-op isn't the only thing that's really drawing people down there. I mean, I realize we have some other, a lot of small businesses there, but none of them, nobody's going to mistake any of them as an anchor. And even in the pure definition of it, the co-op really isn't a true anchor, because it's a small grocery store, as grocery stores go. And so I think there, you've got it right as well in saying, well, we got to do some sort of a Phase One. In fact, I think you're probably going to have to do a Phase Two, because it isn't going to cost that much more, because a Phase Two starts poking holes in the ground and testing, and to see if there's spills there. And the city might even need be finding itself, hiring a soils engineer to understand what the earth can support, because there may not be any contamination from an environmental point of view, but if it's been used for fill, and it's all full of old garbage, then, you know, you're not going to be able to build much there. Or if you're going to build something there, people are going to have to sink pilings, and that's going to add to the cost, and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So if the city has done those kind of studies, and the city, in its infinite wisdom, decides that it wants to bid it out to developers to build a certain kind of development there, whether it's an expansion of the co-op or something else, you'll have answers. You can say to prospective purchasers, we can tell you what this land is underneath, and what's there and what's not there, so you don't have to worry about that. And then you can get realistic, you can get serious proposals from whoever is interested in considering it. So, and the only thing that I guess I would have trouble with in terms of the sequence of your thinking on this, is with regard to the extension of streetscaping. And I understand, I understand your wish to kind of show some improvement and change, but extending the streetscape along past, west, eastward past the fire station, the report also talks about the possibility of the two vehicle repair facilities there, that those could be made, you know, envisioning the future as part of a future development parcel, or maybe not. And I'd hate to see the city sink a lot of money into sidewalks and, you know, attractive streetlights and trees, you know, plant trees, you know, then in five years, they've all got to be ripped out again. So I'm not sure that I would be eager to have a lot of permanent improvements there, but if you could do some of the stuff that you're talking about, like having a pavilion, food trucks, you know, maybe, or some other businesses that could operate on a so-called temporary, I mean, maybe Blessed Coffee could have a pavilion there, you know, that wouldn't be permanent, and not going, it's still city-owned land. You know, that in and of itself would provide hope and enthusiasm for the people, the businesses there. So by and large, I think this is fine. I'm comfortable with these proposals, and I compliment you on your work. But obviously, it's, you've got us, you've pushed, you've got the ball rolling, and you need, you need others to pick up, pick up the ball.
Well, in that vein, I should, Jeff reminded me, I should have said earlier that we are not wholesale handing this over to the city staff or to the council and expecting you just to take the ball and run with it now. We, a number of people have a stake in this, not just on the task force, but certainly including several of us on the task force, and you have a lot of other community-minded folks who are willing to pitch in, so keep that in mind.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. It's, I think what it is, is that, you know, this far, it's been the task force's effort. I think you're going to be adding ingredients, city staff and other-
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
-experts, consultants, and reports into this, into this dough that we're going to continue to need as it gets richer and richer. And I think eventually, we'll pump, you know, we'll get something coming out of the oven that looks like a long-term plan that's really viable, feasible, from a financial, financing point of view, which is the part that I know about.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe you ought to get, you know, turnovers or something, we can really, no, sorry.
Apple turn numbers?
Apple turn numbers, yeah. First, I want to thank you again for making the effort to boil these down to some priorities. I think that's really an excellent way to help it, and I will take the suggestion to make sure we don't lose track of the other recommendations, because there's actually quite a lot of them in there that don't fit in these six, and it's important not to lose track of those, because essentially, they'll come up again, we don't want to, don't want to lose them. Excuse me. I have a couple of questions. Have you had a chance to look at the proposal by Gary Gek?
Yeah, Gary came and attended a few meetings and put forward his proposal to us, and I think it's included as the X-crossing option in our report, yes.
It is? Right, okay, okay. Because it has a lot of, to me, it has a lot of intriguing qualities. You know, there's some cons to it too, but there's some interesting pros.
Yeah, I think we list the pros and cons in the report.
Yeah, you do. And I'm, some design along that line really appeals to me, because I think that until- And I'm, some design along that line really appeals to me because I think that until the junction is redesigned, the traffic will, problems will never be, signalization won't, won't do it. Sitting at those lights just drives you nuts, basically, whether there's cars there or not. You know, if there are a lot of cars there, it drives you nuts because there are a lot of cars there. If there are no cars there and you're sitting at the light, then that drives you nuts too. So it's kind of a, never a win. I have a question about the crosswalk that is being discussed from Grant to the C-1 My, my concern is that a long crosswalk like that would mean that, that the traffic signal would have to be quite long to allow people to cross at that, at that point. And it's my observation that if you ask the highway folks, the traffic folks, they'll tell you that a shorter crosswalk is also safer because folks who get halfway across in that long space will have no, have no, you know, have nothing, there's no little median or anything to stand on, that, that kind of thing. So I'm a little concerned about how that would all work. Could you, could you talk a little bit about that?
If I can react just as, the situation right now is that if you are standing in front of the co-op and want to cross over to the Carroll Avenue shops, it can take you four minutes to do it legally and very, not everyone will wait the four minutes. And so they will jaywalk and risk whatever risk they're taking. So the current situation is not working and there's a petition, as you know about, to extend the crosswalk timing by 10 seconds in the, in the current direction. The new crosswalk, we're not going to, we're not suggesting to eliminate the current ones, but we're adding the third one, which used to exist in the old days, would presumably shorten the time it takes to get from the co-op over to the Carroll Avenue shops.
That, that's true. That wasn't quite what my question was though. My question concerned more about the traffic safety issues of having a longer, you know, a longer crosswalk to walk. I'm, I'm concerned that, that S H A would say, well, if you want to put a crosswalk there, then we're going to have to have, I'm exaggerating, a three-minute light so that people can be sure to get across. And, and then, as you know, the lights are not really set up to see whether people are there or not, and so then the cars would be sitting there waiting for an empty, you know, no one walking across kind of thing. Yeah. So I was wondering what's, some thoughts you had on that?
Well, if you think of yourself driving up from the hospital on Carroll Avenue and waiting for the left turn light to go onto Ethan Allen, when that left turn light kicks in, at that moment, that would be the time when a crosswalk from Grant to the C-1 parcel would signal safe crossing for pedestrians during that same sequence because none, none of the traffic coming from the firehouse or towards the firehouse can move at that point in time. So we feel that you could wedge this crosswalk period, this pedestrian crossing period in simultaneous to that left turn signal.
Yeah, that would, that's a very clever solution to it. I like that idea. Another question I had was you, I'm a big bike fan and I have tried to bike ride around the junction area. It's fairly daunting. Could you talk a little bit more about, I mean, I love the idea of a bike shared station there, but I do wonder how folks would actually get around that junction other than essentially riding in traffic. Where would the, where were you thinking the bike lanes might go?
Well, what we've said in the report is you've got to respect the desire for pedestrians and bikers to avoid grade changes, obviously. And Carroll, Ethan Allen is a ridge-top road, so you can see right now bikers coming from Old Town veer onto the sidewalk illegally and head down towards the co-op. We're wondering whether it might be possible in a quiet way to begin conversations with property owners who may have space behind their property so that a kind of back lot route could negotiate, staying basically on the top of the hill there, but could negotiate its way behind the Carroll Avenue shops, crossing Grant, perhaps get behind the other businesses that are on the main stretch of, the shared stretch of 410, 195, and then somehow have a safe crossing to resume travel either, or resume travel towards Old Town, but also Grant Avenue could become a link directly to here because it's just a long two blocks from here straight up the hill. So we're, we're trying to think about alternatives if need be, if it turns out that there isn't any more right-of-way to make room on the roadway. But Bob Ruben Mulebacher has, has pointed out, I think aptly, that the buyer should be moving towards bicycles rather than consigning them to back corners of the district. So first you need to see if there is actually a way, and it's 21st century, to make way for bikes on the roadway.
Yeah, thank you. That was very helpful. I was hoping you'd have some ideas for how that might be accomplished because I think it's a very worthy goal. There are a lot of people in Tacoma Park who, as you say, would bike along the ridge if it were, you know, moderately safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Williams.
All right. First, another great job to pare down 110 pages into, I guess, phase one, six very concise and succinct suggestions is, is pretty incredible. The other part that I want to say is I really appreciate the timeline issues. It, it holds our feet to the fire and it's not as soon as possible because as I've said 300 times at least, as soon as possible has no power. It could be, it could be 20 years. Maybe it has been. So I, I appreciate that. I do notice in all of the suggestions, somehow it says city council, city manager and stakeholders in almost every one, so that really does hold our, our feet to the fire. And I just want us to do something. I mean, I know having participated in almost all of the stakeholder meetings plus accosting probably close to 100 people on the street in the pedestrian stops, they want something done. And, and just FYI, the place that everyone I talked to on the street was coming to as an anchor was the co-op. That was the first, you know, that was where they were coming or to book them to the yoga, going to yoga. So it is for that tract of stores, the co-op is a major anchor store. Not major, I mean, it's not a big grocery store. I know it's small, but it is the anchor store. To allow people to get across the street more easily, to get down to, as I keep saying, the niche stores of which there are, you know, close to 20 other stores that, that offer services that you can't get anyplace else in, in the area. Well, you probably can, but it, it's right there. So that's an important part. I have noticed a change. I've seen the facade changes. There are three of them, three new signs. They look fabulous. I know that probably either came from the city of Tacoma Park or from the state. I've also picked up some apps from a staff member, I'm going to say his name wrong, Ewok?
Erkin.
Erkin. I knew I was going to say, say it wrong. The other night at the social, at the social for other facade that I'm going to actually pass out to some of the, some of the merchants there. Let's see. My question is, is I guess maybe to the city, to myself, what's it going to take to get State Highway to empower, pun intended, Pepco to come in and actually bring the power in to get that, get the cameras up and ready to go? Last week, State Highway told W S S C verbally over the news to get a piece of road fixed, get the, get the main line fixed and fix the road, and they had it done within, you know, within hours at Route 450 at Piece Cross. It was completed in hours. So they have a bigger stick than I think they've been using with Pepco. Probably shouldn't say, that's probably pretty violent, sorry. I just, I, I just want to know what it's going to take to get them to come in and, and complete that process. Also, what's it going to take to get Pepco to come in and do this crosswalk? How many signatures do we need to get to get them to, to come in? It's not really, it's a rhetorical question. You all don't need to answer that. We know what, what we may, we may have to send me in there.
Not a last resort.
That is a course, yes, a last resort, but, but, but together to do something. And, you know, since, this has been going on since, what, what do we say, 1996 or is it before?
Before.
It's before. We've waited long enough to get these changes to happen and, and I just, I, I want to, what do we need to do to cause that? Go, Roger.
I had a question for you, Bruce. Do you know of any other municipalities that, like maybe Aberdeen or communities along Route One that have had historic districts that also, maybe Harvard de Grasse, that, how do you say it? I don't know how to say it. But that have had to try to work with S H A on special situations where there was a major highway coming through, but you really wanted an intimate feel to a certain intersection?
I'd have to think about that.
Because I, my thought is that we're, we're used to thinking, I'm always so pie in the sky, but we're used to thinking of it as an adversarial relationship with S H A automatically, but maybe this could be something that they could brag about, that they, they contributed to a kind of special revaluation case.
Yeah, Laurel does, so does Mount Rainier. You know, and they're all state highways.
Yeah, I think almost every Maryland main street has a state highway through the Vane Street, so there's, there's probably sources to go to.
Yeah, but I was, I was also thinking of it in terms of a designated historic district.
Right, right. And some of them are, Frostburg, there's a few others.
The, I wanted to emphasize Kay's point about the small items. We didn't want to take a lot of time with minutia at this point in time, but, but we do urge the council and the city staff to pay attention to small items because we do think there are programs that are working like the facade program. We, we have three facade improvements this year and we would like to see that leveraged and accelerated. And we do think that there's a problem with basic maintenance. I, along with several of the council folks up there, have been working on some streetlighting situations. We're going on about, I think, five months since we first brought it to the, to certain folks' attention, and we still don't have the light poles replaced. And we think these small things all contribute to the perceptions that we're trying to get rid of. These are small items. We don't want to spend too much time on them, but we want to spend an appropriate amount of time on them so they don't linger and create, continue to create this bad impression. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all you for staying up so late at night and all the fine work you put into this. This is, appreciate you coming back night after night to try to refine this down to something and we just have to support Councilmember Daniels Cohen's suggestion that we just do something. I think it's, a lot of community work's been put into this, a lot of volunteer time and effort, and came out with a good report a couple of weeks ago and now, you know, narrowed it down to some, some priorities. And asking, you know, on the cover sheet I looked to say, well, what are we really here to do? And it says, you know, identify priority items for possible inclusion in the budget. So since I'm a city council member, I'm going to, going to identify two number-one priorities and, you know, the whole traffic flow and, and both pedestrian and vehicular travel is a number-one, as is the assessment of the city-owned lot. You know, we've had that lot for way too many years for having done nothing but, but parked cars on it. You know, we bought it so, to keep it from developed, being developed in a way we didn't want it to be developed. And, you know, that predates my time on the council. I don't know if it happened before you were on the council or when you were on the council, Bruce, but.
While I was on.
Yeah, I know you're older than me.
Yeah, nothing predates Bruce.
But, you know, we haven't done anything, but it's ridiculous. We don't even know what we can do with it, and that's even more ridiculous. You know, so it doesn't matter whether it's Blessed Coffee or a co-op or, well, I won't say McDonald's, but it doesn't matter what it is, nothing's going to happen there unless, unless we know what can happen and what remediation has to be done, if any, to build on it. So I see that as being imperative, but obviously the, the whole issue with traffic flow and, and both vehicular and, and pedestrian is, you know, right at the top of the list for community issues. I don't see that as being terribly expensive for this coming year. I think it's, it's expensive from a, from staff and again volunteer to, to try to get S H A to the table and to work with us. And, and it's, and it's how can we help them to get Pepco to do their job? How can we work with S H A so that we end up with what we want at the end of the day? I know that, you know, coordinating the, the traffic control devices with the county would, you know, promises to have a big impact on our traffic flow through that area. So, you know, what do we have to do to make that happen? I don't think that one costs nearly as, as much money as, as my other number-one, which is assessment of the, of the property. These other things are nice. I agree with them and we can, you know, we can move forward, but I would put them lower down on the list. So as we approach the budget, those are the two I'd like to see included in the proposal.
I just want to come back to a couple of quick things and then we'll see if we can wrap this up. People are talking about do something. I want to remind everybody that we've already done something, the crossing guard, that's in the budget, so we can cross one off the list.
Now we have to find a place for her to cross the, or him.
I also wanted to take the opportunity to, since there are a number of people here interested in this item, to alert folks that what we're trying to do is set up a, I'm not quite sure what to call it. You know, we, we've been trying to set up times for the council to have items that aren't just in these chambers, in this organization with, with the strictures that that puts on things, but to go out into the community and do some things. And we've identified two Thursdays in May, one of them we were going to do the suggestion that was presented about basically going out and kind of doing a tree tour. And the other one was the, everybody go up to the junction and, you know, meet together with the, with the task force, with community members and with the council and with some appropriate staff and trying to do that on, on times when it's, we're not putting undue burdens coming in on the weekend. So we've identified the two Thursdays in May, the 17th and the 24th, to try and do those two things, both the trees and the Tacoma Junction. So if people want to circle their calendars for May 17th and 24th, we haven't quite finalized it, but put that on your calendars that we're going to try and do that.
We think that's a terrific idea.
So we'll, and we're thinking we'll have like a couple of hours in the, kind of the 6:30 to 8:30 range. It'll be light enough then and that it'll be an opportunity to just spend some quality time up at the junction looking at a bunch of these things together and with somebody to take some notes and do some. take some notes and do some follow-up. So I think where we need to go from here is that I know staff wants to get a chance to kind of weigh in with some feedback on some of these things. I think that probably comes in, comes in as some reality checks on time and money, and also some questions that they might have. And we're going to need to kind of, I think, group some of the S.H.A. pieces, so that we have a clear sense of how we can move forward on a number of these things in a coordinated way with State Highway Administration, because I know that they met with the task force. But I think at this point, we need to kind of make sure that we're coordinating what the task force has been talking to them about, what city staff talks to them about, and make sure that we can have a clear sense of how we can go forward with them in a coordinated fashion to get what we need. Councilmember Grimes, you had--
Yeah. What timeframe did you envision for staff feedback? I think it would be helpful to give staff a timing request for that.
And I'll, and I'll look to the city manager, since we're, she's now elbows-deep into budget, wondering about how that, a sense of timing, and that may be something that we talk about tomorrow as well when we meet.
Yeah, if we can talk about it tomorrow. There's a few items I know that we had already priced and are actually in the budget that's in very draft form at this point. The environmental assessment, for example. I know it was a consensus of the staff that it not be a Phase One assessment, but a Phase Two. So there's a few items like that, that we have some very preliminary costs.
Would you please clarify Phase Two is?
It's just a much more in-depth environmental assessment.
So it would be one that goes beneath the surface of the--
Yes.
And that would look at the paved lot and the wooded lot, or--
I need to, Sarah, do you know what you--
Just looking at the commercial lot.
The commercial lot.
So the commercial lot runs halfway down the wooded lot? Okay, that's good enough. Thank you.
So--
I will, I need to talk to staff quite candidly. We're right in the middle of the budget process at this point, so that's kind of the immediate focus. I'll just need to see who has time to do what.
It sounds like maybe what I can say at this point is, we will try and come back to this as quickly as possible, recognizing that we're, that staff is now into budget and the council will be into budget before long. But we're trying to do this in as much of a parallel track as we can, so that we don't let things drop, and so that as there are opportunities to have this tied in with the budget discussion, so that we can look at those implications and make some decisions based on as much information as possible with feedback from the task force and the public, that would be good. Additional?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that when staff evaluates what can be done and when by the city administration, that you do consider elements of the work that can be funded by the city but outsourced. Now, I understand that outsourcing, hiring organizations or individuals on contract does take time. It's not a panacea or anything like that. But in terms of actually carrying out the work, I know that the Tacoma Junction Task Force looked into consultants, that there are local organizations that could potentially take on some of this, the actual execution of the work. And I would ask that the staff look into those possibilities.
Some final comments from the task force?
I just, one question was, I think HTI has people with the expertise to do a Phase One assessment, which is looking through historical records of how a land was used. Just as kind of a closing comment from me, I'd, Fred, what you were saying earlier about how these various pieces come together with traffic and the city-owned parcel, I think that's really the reason for trying to pursue four or five actions at once. It's kind of like five or six ships that need to come into the harbor simultaneously. If you have a clear sense of what you want on the city-owned parcel, only then can you think about how that may affect traffic with egress in and out of the lot, and how that would affect the lights, or any different kind of traffic intervention you had there. Another example would be overlap that Howard talked about earlier is just, if you have a more beautiful streetscape in front of the city lot, whether you want to wait to do that or not, that increases the attractiveness to the area, to market to someone. If you have some small entrepreneurs in a pavilion, they may end up being tenants or co-developers or something. So all these pieces might come together in a really beautiful way, so long as some progress is made on them in the first year.
If I could respond a little bit here?
Oh, go ahead.
If I might. Roger, there is, to your point, a certain amount of chicken-and-egg kind of a thing that you ably pointed out. And that can be a little disconcerting, to the point where you might sort of say, "Well, we have to start everywhere at all points on the compass and move to the center simultaneously." But it's not really that way. The environmental assessment is something that can be done now. It has to be done sooner or later, and you're not going to get any developer to sit down at a table, or, you know, anybody. When I say developer, I'm not necessarily implying that it's going, that's lot needs to be built with a lot of buildings, but if that were the direction you wanted to go, you're not going to get anybody to even sit down and give you the time of day, because the first thing they're going to say is, "Well, yeah, but we're not, we can't come up with a realistic plan until we find out what's underneath, and we're not going to spend our money to do that. You got to spend your money." So we know we can do that first. And it's similar with the traffic flow. Until we can figure out exactly what the traffic demands are, just, you know, if you got rid of all the traffic lights, what would actually happen there? Things might be solved instantly. But certainly, you know, right now, the signalization is so messed up, that who's to say what the solutions might ultimately need to be? They may not nearly need to be as drastic as some of us may think. That's all I'm trying to say.
I agree.
My final comment simply is that I think if you go forward with a five-year plan or a three-year or seven-year plan, that we can be helpful to you in working that through, because in essence, that's what we spent 16 months doing, and weighing the alternatives and so forth. So feel free to call upon us.
That's all right. Already going to schedule the resolution extending the term of the task force.
Fifteen years. Fifteen years to life.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you for all the people who came for the discussion. And we look forward to continuing this and seeing if we can get some things going. Your turn.
Love it.